Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Alderman Dukneak is excused. Alderman Tillman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mark, would you lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everybody, please look at their minutes of 2/1918. And if there aren't any corrections, comments, motion. Who else can make a motion to approve their minutes of February 19, 2018?
Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item four is an informational summarization of the treasurer's report for the month of January 2018. With us tonight is Barb.
Hello. All right, so as in past months, you have a report attached that has lots of detail, but I've summarized just kind of the ending amounts here on the council report. Our beginning balance was $62,625,971.80. Ending balance, $59,679,593.51. Our interest earned was $57,179.30. All of that was a decrease of $2,946,378.29. For January, our tax collection was $23,401,192.42, or 30.44% of the total levied. City share of that amount was $6,975,859.2. Just something to note, out of that amount, the city share, we actually had to pay out an extra $561,062.80 to make the other taxing districts whole for the personal property tax that we did not collect. We'll be able to charge that back later, or at least a portion of it. I don't know if you have any questions, comments?
We do this to you every year, but just to clarify, and taxes that weren't collected, can you just clarify for people out there that we do go after those taxes?
For the personal property tax?
Yes.
Yes, we will do that. We'll be turning them over to a collection agency within the next couple of months. A portion of it, we do get to charge back to the other taxing jurisdictions. Unfortunately, one of the laws changed a number of years ago. We can't charge all of it back, only on businesses that are no longer in business or no longer on the next tax roll. But yes, we do go after them through collections.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Barb? No? Seeing none? Nope. Thank you very much, Barb.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number five, consideration of a motion toward the Drexel Town Square Public Restroom Projects to the lowest responsible bidder, KGV. With us tonight, we got... Who's taking that one?
Sure. Yeah. Andrew, I'll just kind of do some introductory. On the January 16th meeting of this year, council's direction was to proceed on with the final design of the restroom project. This is a 728 square feet buildout of the vacant space at 332 Town Square Way, on the north side of Town Square Way, over halfway, or splitting between GD's Cupcakes and Pizza Man. We worked with the architect that we had the prior agreement with to finish those off, advertise them for bid, and we received five bids. Recommendation is to go with KVG Building Corporation for their bid of $179,628. They were approximately 12% cheaper than the second lowest bidder. We did have a wide range of bids, from about $180 up to about $283. So, a wide range of bids, but we did have five bids, so we were pleased with that turnout. I feel confident that we will get these restrooms instructed at a fair price. And we'd like to proceed as soon as possible as summer's approaching soon. And we want to get those restrooms up and running for the time for the splash pad to be opened up and some of the other social functions that the city puts on in the summertime.
Great. Andrew?
Mayor, I just wanted to add too, because I know there's just a little bit of impatience in the community with a couple summers here at DTS without the bathrooms, but as council is fully aware, the wait was well worth it from a financial perspective. So with the delay and, you know, going a couple summers without bathroom space, council knows that we've saved renegotiating this a bit with the developer easily $200,000 or more over the life of the initial term of the lease. So I thought I wanted to add that for those folks. Bathrooms are on the way in Drexel Town Square, but it was definitely worth the wait for your tax dollars.
Doug?
Thanks. One question, Mike, and I should have asked you this earlier, and Andrew. Does the bid package include signage appropriate to, that meets the DTS standards for wayfinding direct people there?
The plan does not include that, so that would something, definitely something we need to keep in front of us.
Questions, comments from council? Chris?
I just have one, just brief comment. As I mentioned at our last meeting when we were, you know, talking about this, we point out the obvious in here that, you know, the users of Drexel Town Square, so I would ask that we look, you know, going forward, how we can share this cost with the other stakeholders in Drexel Town Square, maybe help us with the footage of the bill a little bit. Thank you.
Anyone else? No, just to add to it, this was a long-range plan, and it's always been planned out at Drexel Town Square. Got a little bit pricey, so it went back to the drawing board. As Andrew pointed out, it's almost $200,000 savings by redoing it the way we renegotiated the terms and the lease. So, a far better improvement for the citizens here at DTS. Nice job on the bids. So, nothing more? Motion?
Park moves to award the Drexel Town Square Public Restroom Project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, KVG Building Corporation, Inc., for the lump sum bid price of $179,628.
Guzekowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of an ordinance fixing the salary ranges, wages, and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2018. And we have our HR manager, Becky, with us tonight.
Good evening. So you have two copies. One is a marked-up copy that has all the changes, and the other one is a clean copy of ordinance 2897. Most of the changes you'll see are, they were either rounding errors, or we had new hires, such as the electrical inspector was a new position, so that person's salary changed, as well as the sanitarian. Other changes to note would be the deputy comptroller slash payroll coordinator, and that was an error due to not adding on the additional .7% increase that we received last year, as well as the staff accountant. That was the same error with that. So they were recommendations made during the budget process, but the additional percentage was not added on when the ordinance was created. Anything you wanted to add, Andrew?
Any questions, comments?
I should note that this was also reviewed and approved at the last Personnel Committee meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Make anything for Personnel? No?
Pretty much housekeeping.
Okay. All right, seeing nothing? Motion?
I'm going to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2897, amending ordinance number 2889, fixing the salary ranges, salary, wages, and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2018.
Kurkowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of approval of vendor summary report for February 28th, 2018, for the combined total amounts of $380,155.37. Not see Bridget here, so if you have questions, we'll try to, we'll go by committee to answer these, I guess, or Andrew has all the answers. I don't see anything out of the norm, other than normal, normal city maintenance and business. Are no questions, comments? Motion?
Still move to approve the February 28th, 2018 vendor summary report in the amount of, combined amount of $380,155.37.
Kurowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of motion for a three-year lease to, lease-to-own contract with utility sales and service for the lease of an area lift truck in the amount of $110,048.13. And we have Ted with us from Streets.
Yeah, if you recall, during the CEP meetings, we had approved purchasing a new lift truck, but it was requested that I look around and see if I could find a lease option for the truck. Two companies showed interest in providing us a quote for this, and to be honest with you, their quotes were so close together, I mean, the difference was $1,100. We actually selected the higher of the two quotes. Nothing against the other one. I mean, there are a few items from one to the other where we could probably nickel-and-dime it to show the $1,100, but the fact of the matter is, is the real reason that we would prefer to go with the Versalift over the Duralift truck is we currently have two Versalifts now, and the controls are different. And anyone that's run equipment, if you run a cat or a case or something like that, and the controls are in wrong hands, it's, you know, usually kind of goof you up. So rather than do that to the operators and the machine, we would prefer to get the one that we currently have for $1,100.
Consistency is good. Any questions for Ted concerning the aerial lift truck? Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Ted, do you recall what, I don't remember what we budgeted for on this. Do you have that ballpark?
Yeah, $125. And actually, Bridget is in the process of getting the quotes from the banks, and right now, even with, yeah, she has one now, but even with that one, I want to say we're well under the $125 with the payments and interest in that.
Speak, Melissa.
Tell you what I know, thanks, Mayor. Just to back up Ted's information, there was one quote from First Source Bank, and that quote was for a total of $114,937.44. So as Ted said, this is exceeding what we have in front of us, and that would be three annual payments of just over $38,000 at 4.42% interest. So, that's the one.
And just to be clear, Ted, this is shared between forestry, parks, streets for all uses?
All our vehicles are shared. The only, the only reason I'm saying for forestry is we're actually adding a couple of things that would be geared more towards cutting down trees, like a cage over the top if it's, if branches fall in, and it won't damage the truck, which our other one doesn't have.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Ted? No, seeing none? Motion, please.
Still move to approve a three-year lease on contract with utility sales and service for the lease of an aerial lift truck in the amount of $110,040.13.
Guzekowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of a resolution accepting the 2017 annual report for the Oak Creek WPDES stormwater permit.
This is the annual report that is required by the Department of Natural Resources for our NR216 permit. This permit covers the regulations on pollutant and sediment elimination from runoff, and basically this report then is our summary of the past years, the 2007, 2017 operations to undertake these efforts, which is a very large effort by the city. And basically is the operations to reduce the sediment and pollutant runoffs from construction sites and developments and from our roadways. So it consists of streets sweeping effort, catch basin inspections, and vac cleaning of those structures. Also ditch maintenance on our rural roadway sections, detention pond maintenance, and these are facilities that are basically increasing in number as the city develops from year to year. So, ongoing effort. The city has been successful in reaching the 40% citywide sediment reduction requirement, and even more so on new development, on forcing the 80% reduction. So, that's just a real brief summary of the effort. The report did not specify anything out of the ordinary this year. Sometimes you may see large tonnage of street sweeping quantities. Couple years back, I recall that that was due to just a heavier winter where there was more sand and salt by the roadway, so that gets swept up in the spring. As you see these charts, the big sweeping effort, it's year-round, but the tonnages are high in April and May, and then they, and then they go down as we get through the summer. So, that's really it as far as the report. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Ken?
Looking at this thing, Mike reminded me, given what MATC is doing on their detention pond, I see we have our 11 that we talk about, and the fact that we took 13 yards of sediment out of a pond, which obviously is barely a dump, but they are digging out of that. Do we have a future like that? We're going to have some maintenance, like that on some of our stuff?
You know, the ongoing efforts that we do with the mowing of the side slopes of the ponds, that really helps, and the streets sweeping, really helps push those larger efforts off into the future. We're trying to catch all of that, pick that up, get that landfill before it makes its way into the waterways.
We're required, obviously, probably to keep track of what the volume is of those streams.
Yes, yep, and that is documented in the report.
Anyone else, questions for Mike? No. You know, I'll just leave you with one comment. I was part of the Root River study on the pollutants that actually go in. It was the watershed study, and it just isn't the obvious stuff. Everybody looks in the streets and says it's salt, everything that's being put down. There's a lot of things that individuals do, washing their car, the soap goes down the sewer. Some people are very negligent, maybe it's motor oil, transmission oil leaking on the streets, right down to pet waste. Very important that everybody does their part and kind of polices themselves, and it's going to help us all as a city. So just going forward, very extensive report, though, a lot of good stuff in here. Anyways, if nobody has anything else, motion?
Still move to approve resolution 11916-030618, accepting the 2017 annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater NR216 permit.
Guzekowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Next is consideration of a motion to approve installation of no parking and no left turn signs at 8545 South Shepherd Avenue, near Edgewood Elementary School in the third district. We have traffic and safety with us, our representative?
Rich is on that.
Rich is on, oh, and Rich sits on there.
That's his district, too.
Oh, Mike? Please, can you, could you come to the microphone, please? Name and address, sir, and then if you could just tell us what went on at the committee?
My name is Greg Wolfe. I'm 6943 South Sparrow Road in Oak Creek, and I am on the Transit Safety Committee. This was brought up by the school, the school, and the principal was at our meeting, and he explained that in the afternoon, if any of you are familiar with Edgewood, the cars line up on Shepherd, and if there's cars parked there, then they go out and block the laneage because, you know, to keep in the line. And also, they wanted a left, no left turn sign coming north, so they wouldn't turn into that driveway and cause traffic congestion that way, too. So, we approved it in the committee, and that's about all I could say.
Great, thank you very much.
Sir, any residents speak at this meeting? Did any locals show up there for that?
Not for that issue, no.
Any comments?
Really logical.
Yeah, it makes sense. The principal's petitioning for it, and again, our committees usually vet this out pretty well, whether it's traffic and safety, planning, parks and rec, library, most of this stuff's pretty well figured out before it almost hits us. So, there's no other questions or comments or concerns? Motion on Ken.
Park moves to approve the installation of no parking and no left turn signs at 8545 South Shepherd Avenue, Edgewood Elementary School.
Kurowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Next is consideration of a resolution vacating a drainage easement for I-Drexel LLC, I-CAP Development LLC for the property at 410 West Drexel Avenue. That's Mike again, isn't it? Doug?
As a segue between engineering and community development here, this is actually the vacation of a drainage easement on the parcels that are being developed by I-CAP Development at the northeast corner of Sixth and Drexel, part of the proposed TID-15 project. In the review that was done as part of the site planning for this, there was noted that there was an existing drainage easement that no longer was necessary as a precursor to development of this property. It is being requested that this drainage easement be vacated. Engineering has reviewed it. They have no objection to it. Planning staff has no objection to the vacation of the easement as well.
Questions, comments? None? All right, motion? Kurowski, make a motion to adopt resolution number 11919030618, vacating a drainage easement for I-Drexel LLC, I-CAP Development LLC for the property at 410 West Drexel Avenue.
Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 12, consideration of a resolution creating, describing, and making certain findings and approving the project plan for the boundaries for tax increment district number 14 at 610 West Rossin Avenue, 7001 and 7045 South Sixth Street in the first district.
I can start off, Mayor, and this will be a little bit of a committee approach as well. We've asked Jolena Presti at Vandewell &amp; Associates, our consultants, on this and the next TID project plan 14 and 15 in the community, to just give a brief presentation. And I think the staff, once we get through most of the presentation here, I think the staff will be pretty brief, as I know, looking at, counting heads, I think four, at least four of you have heard this presentation at either the Joint Review Board or the Plan Commission wherein this was discussed. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we'll turn it over to Jolena.
Fine.
For a brief presentation.
Welcome.
Great, thank you. This is working fine? Okay. Jolena Presti, Vandewell &amp; Associates, 247 West Freshwater Way in Milwaukee. So thanks for having me again. I'm just going to give a brief overview, as we've done a couple times now, for the creation of TIF, or TID 14 and 15. Just real briefly, I'll go over the project creation timeline, so you can see before you when we started the preparation of the project plan. The first JRB meeting was held on February 1st. February 13th, some of you may have been at the Plan Commission public hearing, and today we have the action by city council, and then we're in the process of setting the action by JRB meeting for early April. I think the first week of April is the goal. So just a refresher, per statutes, this is what is required when you establish TIF districts. You develop or establish the boundaries, you declare the type of TIF district. These are both blighted TIF districts. You determine the project costs and expenditures, the potential development projects and the values for those. You need to perform a financial feasibility analysis, and then demonstrate but-for finding, and demonstrate that this project or the project plans are consistent with zoning and the comprehensive plan. So the but-for test that must be met is to prove that there is public purpose or benefit to the creation of these districts. So but for one of these issues being accomplished, you would not be able to create a TIF district. So in these cases, we are seeking to eliminate blight. Most of these actually work for this, these two districts, but diversifying the tax base, removing social hazards, environmental issues, and improving connectivity, transportation, utility services. And when possible, creating jobs. I think I skipped that one. So the purpose of both of these, we don't typically put them in tandem so closely, but they're actually very well-aligned in that we're working them through the same timeline. The presentation goes side by side for each of the districts. So for these, we are trying to advance necessary site-specific remediation issues, including the blight elimination I mentioned, and installing public improvements or infrastructure. We're building off of the planned near-term development in the growth areas, both Rossin and Drexel near Sixth. Then I'll go through a couple maps in a minute. And in many cases where these scenarios exist, where there's blighted or environmentally contaminated land, you need to really offer redevelopment incentives in order to see, sort of that but-for, to see the progress and the development occur. And then, of course, we're also trying to support new complementary businesses along these major arterials. So the proposed TID 14 boundary, we have on the map, you'll see on the screen here, this is at Sixth and Rossin, and we have three parcels. We are working with 10, almost 10 and a half acres, vacant former industrial chemical storage uses on these sites. And so here are just some of the stats. I said there's three parcels, total acres, the base value right now is just over $639,000 per blight as defined by statutes. We found 100% of the property blighted. The projected total value increment for this site is $10 million, with a total tax increment of the 27-year lifespan of a blighted TIF district of just over $5.7 million. So this is the concept as submitted, and Andrew, did you want to jump in to describe anything here?
You've challenged me to be brief.
Okay.
That's great.
You can go as long as you want.
You're doing a good job with that, too. I guess I'll just back up and state some general comments about both TIDS, some of which has been covered by Jolena, or will be very briefly after this. But as the council is well aware, as you've looked at term sheets for both of these developments, you've approved finance development agreements for each development. both TIDS, some of which has been covered by Jolena or will be very briefly after this. But as the council is well aware, as you've looked at term sheet for, term sheets for both of these developments, you've approved finance development agreements for each development. This is less, less about, less, there's less motivation here in the property tax base, which is usually our typical metric as a community, and more so about the blight elimination. And in that regard, these two tax increment districts are really, I hate, hate to use the term again because it's the third time, but poster children for tax increment finance. This is exactly the type of stuff, maybe perhaps in a more urban setting, that the tax increment law was established to accomplish in the late, in the late 70s. What, what we really like as a staff about these projects are, the, the projects are, you know, project costs, the projects are very precise, they're defined costs, they're really, with the exception of TID 15 and the, and the redevelopment of the Roth parcels in the future, are, are very known. A lot of times we have tax increment districts where there's multi-phased type of approach where maybe we have a good handle on what phase one and two are, but down the road there's, there's certainly some things that can change later on in the life. These are really crisp, they're really well packaged and they're kind of in and out. And I know that one of the criticisms of the, of tax increment financing is that, you know, the parcels, the increment in tax revenue from the parcels are held in the district and not available for general property tax relief for a period of years. And we're happy to report that although we have a statutory life of 27 years in, in both of these, for both of these districts, we've projected that 14 can close out in about 15 years, maybe, maybe better, and, and 15 can close out in 12 years or maybe better. That's because we know how, what the cash looks like, we know what the projects are, and there's not some of those uncertainties later on in the life of the districts. Jolena jumped into 14, really again, one project redevelopment of these three parcels, 180,000 square foot spec industrial space for which the city is providing, providing incentives for and exclusively for, in both of these districts, the environmental cleanup efforts that need to go on in order to get these properties into a redevelopable state. Very likely these would remain in a period undefined if, if the city did not help and assist with these remediation costs, the market wouldn't bear those additional costs in terms of the redevelopment. Similarly, in 15, we're looking at, I don't think it's any secret now, an Aldi grocery store of about 23,000 square feet and then a 6100 square foot additional building with users to be defined into the future. And again, the city is providing increment, tax increment assistance for the environmental cleanup of the property. And just to be clear, the city is not providing cash incentives for, you know, an Aldi grocery store. I know that's kind of out there, so I thought I'd, I'd just put that out blatantly. Aldi's a great partner, they have a very large distribution presence here, they've employed many people and paid a lot of taxes here, but this is not, this is not a cash incentive for an Aldi store. And I, also I think just kind of a cool thing, each of the tax increment districts also affords or avails itself of a $75,000 budget to, to potentially in the future rehabilitate some, some rather unsightly highway overpass, or excuse me, railroad overpasses that we have on Drexel and Rossin, really immediately adjacent to, to each of these projects respectively. So we think that can be kind of cool, that can be a community piece where we're reaching out and getting ideas for what the community wants to do with that, and it furthers a strategic action plan goal we have to, to help beautify Oak Creek and improve pedestrian thoroughfares and those types of things. So I know I went on a little longer than Jolena has already, outlining the whole presentation for you, but I think it was, you know, strategic to correct some, to correct some things that are out there and provide some comments in that regard today.
Great, thank you. So I did just bypass a couple that I think Andrew covered just fine, so just making sure I covered the, the stats in the same way for TID 14, for 15 as I did for 14. Again, this one, 100% blighted, the base value is higher at 1.8 million, the projected total value increment of 5 million over the total tax increment of 2.7 over 27 years. And again, this one, looking at the concept, they'd be starting with two parcels with the eventual future phase two as indicated, future growth area, just considering you're already redeveloping here, it's smart to incorporate the whole area in this TIF district. So I think we have well covered the eligible, or what the project costs will be for this, these districts, but this is just a list of what is eligible per statute. Again, the focus here is really going to be on getting the sites ready, demos, site prep, environmental issues, and the cash grants that would be needed in order to get the sites ready for development. So I think, Andrew, you covered this one thoroughly, so these are both on page 18 in each of the project plans. We try to reference that throughout the presentation if you want to look more in-depth. Under the capital costs, under the expenditure year of 15 for TID 14 is that 75,000 for the rail bridge, and then under expenditure year 12 for TID 15 is the 75,000. And then the remainder works out under the economic development incentives for site preparation, and then the typical administrative costs for managing and keeping the TIF districts operating. So this is just a handy graphic that we like to use with, that's been developed by the Department of Revenue, but again, we put these in tandem showing across the life of these districts, the base value, base value as established, so that's the top right column if you're looking at the, the blue side of the, the right side of the graphic here, looking then at the projected tax increment generated, so broken down by each, I already went over those numbers on those other graphics, the projected value increment, again, 5 million and 10 million. And then the last two we haven't addressed yet are the current annual taxes collected on the properties, so 13,800 for TID 14 and 40,000 for TID 15. And then this is important to see that after the termination of the district, you can see the increase for both of these districts of annual property taxes collected. So that's when the TIF districts are really working, is that you've achieved the development and now the additional tax, taxes collected goes back out to the taxing jurisdictions. So at this point, I typically turn it over to Bridgette for the financial analysis. And I think Andrew covered some of it too.
So in this slide, as Andrew already laid out, the yellow line is our estimated closure where the TIF district is, by our projections, able to close out early in 2032 for TID 14 and then for TID 15 in 2029. And then going on to slide 17, looking back at TID 14, as Andrew already mentioned, these TIF districts are also different in the fact that we know more about them. This isn't necessarily a speculative project that we're going into. So we know that we are working with a potential geo-borrowing or your traditional debt that we would utilize in the TIF districts on the left-hand side of this chart. And then you see the MRO or the pay-go. So the MRO stands for municipal revenue obligation, that is not your typical debt issue, this is what we know it as and call it as your pay-go for your TIF districts. So you don't normally see those in the project plans, they come up in the development agreements, but due to the fact that we know that this was the route that we're going with this developer, you're seeing it in the project plan. Then similarly with TID 15, yes, we have the MRO payments, again here in the middle of the page that show the pay-go for that development.
Sure, and then we need to incorporate or show the impact of creation of these TIF districts on the overlying taxing jurisdiction that's part of the creation of the TIF district. So this is the impact from TID 14. So if you're looking along the spreadsheet or the Excel graphic here, the taxing jurisdictions on the left, you can see what the 2017 tax rate was, then the mill rate, or the percentage of the mill rate by jurisdiction, then moving over to the taxes collected on the base by jurisdiction, which then you can see the total tax increment collected by the TID over the life of the district. So that is part of the impact that is seen per jurisdiction over the life. For this one, it's 5.7. Then the annual taxes collected after the TIF is closed is the amount in that column, which then the final column is the increase in the annual taxes collected. So it shows you the benefit, and we already reviewed these numbers, but this is the actual little table that we put in the project plan. And then similarly for the TID 15. So again, this is just the overall timeline creation, presuming action, if there's action tonight, then we would be able to go back to the JRB in early April for the final preparation of these districts. Any questions?
Dan, Chris, Mike? No, I don't see any, I think you got it all covered. Seeing no other questions, comments? Motion, please. Kuzickowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 11917-030618, creating, describing and making cer- certain findings and approving the project plan and boundaries for tax incremental district number 14, 610 West Rossen Avenue, 7001 and 7045 South Sixth Street.
Lurk will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Item 13 is consideration of resolution creating and describing and making certain findings and approving the project plan for the boundaries and tax incremental district number 15 at 330 400, 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue. So if there's any questions, I think we pretty much covered that in the entire presentation. But if anybody would like to speak, feel free. Seeing none, motion? Kuzickowski will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11918-030618, creating, describing and making certain findings and approving the project plan and boundaries for tax incremental district number 15, 330 400, 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue.
Lurk will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 8300, 8304, 8310 and 8380, South 27th Street and 8370, South Orchard Way. Doug?
Thank you. As the mayor had mentioned, this item is an amendment to the comprehensive land use plan for those properties that were mentioned by HSI Properties. And in its purest form, in its simplest form, the land use plan is reflective of the comprehensive plan and essentially does that, is a indication of the community's preference for, for, for land use, for future land use for these properties. And right now, the existing land use map was based on earlier proposals for a single-family residential or commercial and for a mix of multifamily residential in there, and really was reflective of, again, earlier development proposals. And as things hap- do happen and occur, changes do occur over time, and it is the opportunity for the property owner, in this case, the prospective purchaser, with the consent of the property owner, to petition to change the future land use for a parcel. The proposal in this case is to change that to mixed residential, which is the appropriate category for multifamily residential. This is consistent with the kind of the goals of 27th Street Plan, which kind of call a mix of uses in this area. And there was a lot, and there will be a lot of things that will happen in the future with respect to this proposal, but this is the first step. Should this happen, should the council vote to change the future land use for this area, the applicants would then need to come back and change the zoning, they may need to do some amendments to the official map, finally, they would need to come back with the approval of site and building plans. So well, if those of you who were at the Plan Commission saw a pretty lengthy discussion, very detailed discussion about the proposal, I guess I'm consciously choosing to focus on the land use right now because that's really what the item at hand is, and that's where discretion lies at this point. And with that respect, the future land use is appropriate, and the Plan Commission, who held a public hearing regarding the course changes, incurred and has recommended to your body, our body, that the future land use map be changed in this instance. Andrew, did you want to add anything to that?
I'll just, I'll just provide a little, little more history, and I, I think Doug's comments are, are, are good in that if you look just purely at the decision here on fut- what appropriate future land use would be for this parcel, mixed residential is appropriate, and we do request that you take some action. But we, we were, we met with the developer a couple of days before the Christmas holiday, I believe, and, and we were, we were showed an initial concept plan, and we, we raised some, we raised some objections and some, some things, some food for thought on, on that plan. And we also stated that there was an officially mapped roadway that had to be, had to be dealt with. And I guess the reason, I do want to focus in on the future land use, but the reason I'm bringing this up is because we, we've had, we've had some months to do some collective planning here, and as of, up until and including the presentation that was given at Plan Commission last week, the developer had not attempted to address any of those concerns, and those are staff concerns, and, and they've met with the mayor and, and the hosting aldermen as well. So I want to just reiterate to council that because that, you know, those concepts are out there publicly, the staff still does have some, some real issues with them, and we, we look forward to working cooperatively with the developer to, to address them from a density standpoint, from a unit mix standpoint, point from a parking standpoint, and, and what I think will be something that the residents are, nearby residents are keenly aware, the, the open spaces and the recreational amenities that can come with such a project. So I, I, I hope the presentation wasn't purposeful last week, but we did get out of head of council a little bit, and I just wanted to let folks know that, that the concept is the concept, we have ways to go on it. I know people are now aware and interested of what's going on, probably watching tonight. With that said, you know, the, the appropriate action tonight, per the staff's recommendation anyway, is future land use, this is good, mixed residential, we've had a lot of interest from multifamily residential developers on this piece of ground, and, and we're, we're hopeful we can, we can work something out with, with the developer working with us right now.
Thank you, Andrew, thank you, Doug. Questions, comments from council? Greg, anything?
There are a few residents that showed up to the Planning Commission meeting, none of them in that immediate vicinity that spoke that I remember. However, feedback since then has been positive. A lot of people, and myself included, feel that the mixed residential is a more appropriate use, a more appropriate buffer to the single-family, to the condos that are there than the current before business.
Thank you. Mike? Dan, Chris?
Dan, just to, I, I think, given the focus really on this particular action, just strictly 30,000 feet, it's got to be just on land use, I think it's pretty clear that mixed residential is a good call on this piece of property. That's a good tone, there's other stuff, obviously, land to the north and either additional phases or additional developers, I think this is a good spot to be in on this particular property.
Chris, anything?
Okay, just before we move on, yeah, it, planning, it was a lengthy, lengthy presentation. It, it put a lot of stuff out there that, that really wasn't germane to what we were talking about because it was a comprehensive land use decision, what we're doing. I want to commend the staff because they were well-prepared, they, they reminded everybody to stay on point, and more importantly, I'd like to commend the Planning Commission because after all was said and done, they realized what the decision was right off the get-go, and it was unanimous to rezone this for the comprehensive. Other than that, I do, I do believe it's an appropriate use of land, and if there's nothing else, we can go for motion.
Lurk moves the council adopt ordinance number 2898, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 8300, 8304, 8310 and 8380, South 27th Street and 8370, South Orchard Way.
Before I proceed, does anybody on the council have any questions about what you see on the common council report? Very well. Kirkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the March 6, 2018 License Committee Report.
He'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 16 is consideration of a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 1985 Sub 1 Sub E to discuss the proposed land swap term sheet between the City of Oak Creek, Capstone Quadrangle Doing Businesses Ryan Business Park LLC, Milwaukee County, for the development of properties at 741 West Ryan Road, 1001 West Ryan Road, 9600 South 13th Street, 9700 South 13th Street, and 9900 South 13th Street. Do we need tax key numbers? Okay, as listed tax numbers. B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to consider a claim for excessive assessment of Woodman's Food Market, Inc. C, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to consider the claim for excessive assessment of Robert Fransway SGC LLC and Springbrook Development for the properties at 200R, Pute's Road, West 200 Pute's Road, W 402 Pute's Road, W 404 Pute's Road, W 406 Pute's Road, W 408 Pute's Road, W, and 487 Bell Court. And D, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to discuss Guillermo Carasqueo, thank you, versus the City of Oak Creek, U.S. District Attorney, Eastern District, Wisconsin, Case Number 18 CV 124. And E, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator. Common Council, President Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail will move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to discuss a proposed land swap term sheet between the City of Oak Creek, Capstone Quadrangle, DBA Ryan Business Park LLC, and Milwaukee County for the development of the properties at 741 West Ryan Road, 1001 West Ryan Road, 9600 South 13th Street, 9700 South 13th Street, and 9900 South 13th Street, tax keys as listed. We'll add that to the record, Mike. B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to consider the claim for excessive assessment of Woodman's Food Market, Inc., tax key as listed. C, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to consider the claim for excessive assessment of Robert Fransway SGC LLC and Springbrook Development for the properties at 200R, Pute's Road, W, 200 Pute's Road, W, 402 Pute's Road, W, 404 Pute's Road, W, 406 Pute's Road, W, 408 Pute's Road, W, and 487 Bell Court tax keys as listed. D, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to discuss Guillermo Casqueo versus the City of Oak Creek, U.S. District Court, Eastern District, Wisconsin, Case Number 18 CV 124. And E, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator.
Kuzakowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Will now convene into closed session and return at its conclusion.
We'll recommit in the open session.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Item 18, motion to consider action on closed, closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail will move to authorize the issuance of a notice of disallowance for the claim and for excessive assessments of Woodman's Food Market, Inc., for the property at 8131 South Hall Avenue related to the 2017 assessment, tax key number 813-0938-000.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
No.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Either, do you want to change your vote, or?
Yeah, aye. I was confused.
Either way, motion carries. Either way.
All right, all right. Gail will move to authorize the issuance of notice of disallowance of the claim for excessive assessment of Robert Fransway SGC LLC and Springbrook Development for the properties at 200R, Pute's Road, W, 200 Pute's Road, W, 402 Pute's Road, W, 404 Pute's Road, W, 406 Pute's Road, W, 408 Pute's Road, W, 487 Bell Court for the tax keys as noted in the staff report.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Well, this is, it's important to add to the, related to the 2017 assessment of that motion. It was kind of a orphan down there. Gail will move to approve a settlement in the matter of Guillermo Casqueo versus City of Oak Creek, providing the residence restriction ordinance for sex offenders will not be applied to him while he lives at his current address, and monetary settlement not exceed $23,653 with a full release of all claims.
Kuzakowski, will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Finally, then, Gail will move to adopt Resolution Number 11920-030618, approving a land swap term sheet buying between the City of Oak Creek, Ryan Business Park LLC, and the Milwaukee County, and authorizing the mayor to sign the same.
Kuzakowski, will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And that will bring us up to adjournment. Kirkowski will make a motion to adjourn. Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all for tuning in or attending the meeting, we appreciate that. I'd like to thank our staff, our IT guy always does a good job for us, but in particular, our staff, we had a pretty hefty agenda and they made it pretty smooth for us with the information provided, so thank you all. Go out there, discover and celebrate Oak Creek. Thank you.